County is now in session. County Mayor Jeff Mason is presiding.
Thank you. Before I call for invocation, I was, uh, Ephraim gave me a prayer request for a student at MTSU that committed suicide and please remember the Medley family at their loss. Connor, would you listen?
Yes, sir. Lord, we come to you, we're thankful for the day, Lord, just the beautiful weather we get to experience this time of year. Uh, Lord, our hearts are heavy for the Medley family, Lord. We pray you to be with them, comfort them, uh, or meet their needs in this hour. Just pray that the community rallies around them, uh, like we have so many times before. I pray for this student, Lord, at, uh, MTSU who, uh, took their own life, Lord. Uh, just pray you help in that situation, Lord. What a tragedy. Just pray to meet those needs there. Pray you bless them, Lord. Give us wisdom and clarity in all the decisions we have to make. And we pray all our decisions bring you honor and glory. Jesus sent. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lady Gregory. Helen Bows.
Here.
Terry Givens.
Here.
Billy Bass.
Here.
Greta Kirby.
Here.
Charles Kent.
Here.
Ron Pascal. Lynn Brown. Scotty Barrett. Matt Inyard.
Here.
Erica Ebel.
Here.
Cordell Smith.
Here.
Danny Erizari.
Here.
Stephen Lish.
Here.
Eddie Stout.
Here.
Casey Elrod.
Here.
Justin Malden.
Here.
Javen Cripps.
Here.
Tommy Vane.
Here.
Junior Fields.
Here.
Connor McDonald.
Here.
Teresa Bush. Danny Huff.
Here.
Ed De La Rosa.
Here.
19.
19 present. All right. Uh, next is public comments. Daisy, do you have any public comment?
I've got one.
All right. Tim Better, go ahead and do your public comment.
Oh. Good seeing all.
You know?
Good seeing all y'all, man. I have missed you somewhat. Some of y'all, some of y'all probably missed me, not much, but that's all right. Uh, I'm up here considering the will tax. Folks, we have got to fix the roads. We are. County Commission is mandated by statute to adequately fund the roads. That has not happened in decades, and y'all know it, we know it. It's been that way for a long time. Money ain't been there. Will tax is the fairest way to do it. Came when I was on a budget. I was trying to get it pushed for a hundred dollar a vehicle. Now, that sounds like a lot, but Mickey needs a lot. I mean, I've got five vehicles. We cut with a van plus, we cut some plates, so that's. So you ain't gonna want to keep this one cut out, keep cutting off. Yeah, I'll stand up, I'll walk around. Mickey's done a great job. Y'all know he's done a great job, and he's done it with nothing. He is county every penny. Ain't wasting no time, not wasting any money. Is it? Okay. All right, I'll hold it right here. That works, all right. But we need to pass, there's something else, another option that nobody's talked about. Couple years back, when the finances were rough in the county, we started holding back thirty percent of the general fund. We could drop that to twenty percent. That gives, I can't remember how much, I talked Daisy about this before, Ryan. I can't remember exactly how much that would accumulate. But that's something that could go with Mickey too. But if it means raising taxes, if it means a bigger will tax, a bond issue, whatever it takes, because quite a lot of people in this county deserve better. They deserve to have good roads. That the ambulances can get across, that the fire trucks can get across, even Mickey's having issues with getting flat tires where some of these roads are, school buses. Drive up and take my road. Driving, I'll take you up there, just give me a call, I'll take you up there. Yeah, yeah. Do what?
Go out and maverick.
Yeah, go out and maverick. Those are all District Eight. Pleasant Chase got some that are up. Every district's got roads that are just garbage. It's time to do it, time to fix it. Time to make some tough choices, and I know that may be a hardship for some elderly, fixed income. My mom was on fixed income. She lived in Orson, she paid city and county taxes. Well, where's families? Let them help out. Where are the churches? Let them help out. It's not the county commission's job to help. It's the county commission's job to fund. I see Daisy walking on the clock. To fund the roads, to fund fire department, to fund ambulance, to fund schools, to fund sheriff's department. That's county commission's job. That's pretty much all I got to say, other than, I will say this, and they get to say it last time, I do appreciate the time on commission. I do appreciate the time with you guys. Sometimes things got heated. But hearts are right. And I do appreciate the job that everyone you do, and I'm thankful for the friendships, I'm thankful for the time with y'all. Even you.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the public comment before we move on? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Item number six is the approval of amendments from September twenty-third meeting. Uh, there are a couple of corrections that was brought to my attention on page two under the election of chairman, Chairman Pro Tim. Uh, by the way, that, that paragraph, a motion was made, and it says was made by Charles Kent and seconded by Matt Inyard. That should be, motion was made by Justin Malden and seconded by Chad Kent. So on that one, and then the other one is on page five, near the bottom of the page, a motion was made by Justin Malden, or it says it was made by Junior Fields, it should be Justin Malden and seconded by Matt Inyard to amend and approve the motor vehicle tax rate from a hundred to fifty. Those were two corrections. Time to take a motion for, to approve those corrections.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion approved, Justin. Junior, second. Did you get that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I have a motion and second to approve the amendments, any other additions or corrections to the amendments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, we approve. Item number seven is an update from the Highway Department. Mickey has given you an update here. Mickey is here, if you have any questions for him before we move on? All right, seeing none. All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing on a change to the campground RV and park regulations. And at that, after the public hearing, I will take a motion to approve this change, or disapprove, or leave it alone. Uh, the change is, in your packet on item number four, it says that we were, we are adding the language, commercial uses incidental to the campground RV park shall be permitted if included on an approved RV park and campground site. What that means is, if you build an ancillary commercial use building, like a general store on your campground, as long as you include it on your initial plan, then that is approved as, as written. So, at this time, I'll open, the open the public hearing. Is there any public comment on that? All right, seeing no public comment, we will close that public hearing, and I will take a motion to approve that change.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, Junior Fields, second. Second, Stephen Lish, I have a motion and a second to approve that regulation. Any questions or discussions on this change, or addition? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion, that means, motion carries, thank you very much. Uh, item number four is, or item number three is an update on the implementation of the eighty-one act, and the chairman of the finance committee, uh, Mr. Justin Malden, wanting to address you guys.
Daisy, feel free to, uh, add anything, uh, in this. So, wanted to make the commission aware, we are under the county financial management system of nineteen eighty-one, effective last Thursday, October twenty-four. Uh, on that date, we had the software vendor who came in, moved the data sets over, everything with, we had the. Everything was moved over, uh, on that day. We had two employees from the Board of Education, uh, one in payroll, one in purchasing, who moved over at that time as well. Uh, so the county finance department is fully staffed. They began doing regular functions again on Friday, so everything should be operating as intended. I'm not gonna say if there's not going to be any hiccups or questions or anything like that along the way, it'll be a learning process as everybody gets used to the, the new system, but it has been implemented. There's been a few concerns, uh, that I wanted to address to make you guys aware, to make the public aware of some things that, um, have been said that aren't necessarily correct, and then just some other questions. First and foremost is the bidding process has not changed under the eighty-one act. Department heads and elected officials are still responsible for approving their own bids. So, any department, you know, Jeff Croft's back there, Mickey Barrett's back there, if they have a bid that goes through, they still approve their own bids. That hasn't changed. We didn't pull that from anybody. That authority still lies with them, just like purchasing, still lies with those, uh, department heads, uh, or whoever they designate. It is not up to the county finance department to decide what is in the best interest of to tell department heads and elected officials how to spend their money. They do not have that discretion. They approve purchases or don't approve purchases based off of budget appropriations and existing policy and state statutes. That's it. Doesn't matter what their opinion on that is, they don't have that discretion. Also, payroll is going to be processed by the finance department, because the approval for payroll still resides in with the department heads and the elected officials. It is not up to the finance department to approve payroll, or approve anybody's time off, or to say that it's valid or that it's not valid. If they've got to approve time, time off, they're doing it. That's, that's all they're looking at. They don't approve time off, that is not what the finance department's job is. And responsibilities for audits prior to the implementation of the eighty-one act, so as of Thursday of last year, has not changed. Anything prior to October twenty-fourth resides with the person and the individual who is already financially responsible for it. There's no retroactive reaching back, and the county finance department is responsible for everything, because we haven't had our fiscal year twenty-four audit by the comptroller's office. All departments that were under operating, under their processes for the entire fiscal year twenty-four are responsible for that, and audit comes in, those will still be the responsible parties for that. So just want to clear up a few things that have, uh, been brought to my attention and that have been asked of me, and I want to make you guys aware and ask, do you guys have any, any question about the process since we are now operating under the eighty-one act?
Any questions for Justin or Daisy? All right, thank you, sir.
And I will just say this, Daisy's done a great job, her staff's done a great job. They're rocking and rolling, uh, already. Daisy has done a good job communicating, getting forms updated, letting people know what's going on. She's got a great, a great staff there, and she is fully staffed, and looking forward to seeing what that department says to do for the county, and in the best interest of the county.
Daisy, can you let your phone ring where Justin can hear Rocky Top one more time? Just so you know, I think, I don't think you got to hear today, but, but. All right. Uh, next is the agenda, amendments to the agenda, no, wait, Bill Water is here for an update for us real quick. Sorry, Bill, I almost forgot you there. Can you bull ride in this?
Yeah. You think, uh, this'll work?
Not with, I'll turn it on, see if it does.
I appreciate y'all letting me come and present this to you. I want to read, uh, a letter that I have, and, uh, then I'm gonna make the presentation to the mayor. I think, uh, it'd be good for this to be in the record, in the record. And it went on. I, I will, good evening.
Mayor Mason, commissioners and honored guests, on behalf of the Smith County Chamber of Commerce, I'm honored to stand before you today as we celebrate a monumental moment in the history of our beloved county. In, in this year, twenty twenty-four, we mark the two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary of the founding of Smith County. Established in seventeen ninety-nine as one of the first counties in Middle Tennessee, today we add another layer to our rich heritage by officially adopting a flag that will stand as a symbol of our shared pride, unity and history. Smith County named after Colonel Daniel Smith as a long and storied past that reflects the pioneering spirit of our people. From William Walton, the first settler who built his home on the banks of the Cumberland River, to the veterans of the Revolutionary War who served as security of this land, our history is woven with tales of resilience, hard work and dedication. As we reflect on the past two-hundred-and-twenty-five years, we remember the countless ways Smith County has grown and evolved. Our county was once part of the vast western district of North Carolina, and since seventeen ninety-nine, seven additional counties have been carved from its original borders. Our towns, including Carthage, established in eighteen oh-three, were born from the determination of settlers who sought opportunity along the banks of the Cumberland River. This river is an integral part of our history, helped fuel the early growth of our communities through trade and transportation. The industries that flourished here during the early days of grist mills, distilleries and sawmills, to the later success of tobacco cultivation and pearl harvesting in the Cumberland River, reflecting ingenuity of the people of Smith County. Throughout this time, our courthouse, an elegant second empire-style building constructed in eighteen seventy-nine, has stood as a testament to the strength and enduring spirit of our community. Our flag will serve as a visual representation of this remarkable history and the values we hold here. It will remind future generations of the sacrifices made by those who came before us, including the soldiers who fought in the Battle of New Orleans during the War of eighteen twelve, and the twelve hundred men who served in the Civil War. Their names, along with those of later veterans, are etched in stone on the memorial monument that graces our courthouse lawn today. As we look to the future, this flag will not only symbolize our deep roots, but also our forward-looking spirit. For the days of riverboats and trains to the construction of Interstate forty, which now connects us to the wider world, Smith County continues to embrace the changes that honor, while honoring our past. In closing, we're grateful to the commissioners for adopting this flag as the official symbol of Smith County. It stands for the unity and hard work and determination that have defined us for the past two-hundred-and-twenty-five years, and will guide us into the next chapter of our shared history. Thank you for your support and for honoring the legacy of Smith County. And so I want to present this flag to our mayor, and if you don't mind, I'm gonna use your table here. And when you properly fold it, it shows Smith. So, mayor. Thank you very much.
Fold it where I'm seeing?
Yeah. Upside down, we did that, here, you take this down. And that is the flag that you guys adopted. Thank you, mayor. And I might add, this is the only flag Smith County's ever had, so, uh, we're, we're doing something unique here. I appreciate you all allowing me to have that, uh, design and graphic.
Thank you, mayor. All right. We will move on. Next is the amendments, of the amendments of the agenda and the approval agenda. The only additions you have is, Miss Daisy brought you some, uh, documentation that goes along with the opioid agreements, that they have the label with that money. Uh, we're missing one of those from the, uh, manual house, and they just, they just have to get in here. I will have that in my possession before we, so if approved, I will have it before I sign those, and you will have a copy of that in the billmaker's agenda. At this time, I will take a motion to approve the agenda ad free.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion approved, Junior Fields, second. Casey Elrod. All right, we have a motion and a, a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is, is approved. Item number nine is the county mayor report. Uh, something, and I've been, I want to make sure we get these out early and often for, for everybody. November the tenth is, uh, veterans parade in downtown Carthage. It'll start at two o'clock, and it'll end at courthouse with the wreath lamp. I would love to see that place just packed out, celebrating our veterans in that, in that day. I mean, last year's crowd was a little bigger, but if we can just keep, I mean, that should be something that we all can, you know, it's on a Sunday afternoon, and it went two o'clock, just to get canned, tell everyone, you know, share that on your, on your social media and, uh, tell everybody about it, and I'd say, let's, uh, let's show up big for our veterans on, on Sunday, November the tenth. Appreciate that. All right. Uh, hopefully you're gonna get some really good news on the courthouse grant this week. That's all I'm gonna say. Supposed to find out when, for sure. Uh, the contract is signed in the senior citizen grant, and work will start in November on that. The health department and childcare grants are moving. The water grants are in various stages, you will see some memorandum of understandings for those tonight. Uh, Mickey, you may have some more on this, but Collier is collecting data for the stormwater study, so I'm not, Mickey, if you talked to them, you know exactly, they said a date?
Oh, no, not for the conclusion.
Okay, thank you. Uh, one thing else that, uh, Miss Greta brought me just a minute ago, she went to the CTS, uh, commissioners, and your continuing education has went from seven hours to eight hours per year, so just make sure you keep up with that, so. All right. Any questions for me on the mayor's report? All right. Yes, sir.
Two things, mayor, do they have a keynote for the veterans, uh, veterans, uh?
Uh, I can find out. I will find out.
Any update on the playground?
It's done.
It's done, okay. Are we gonna do a ceremony to?
Uh, maybe tomorrow.
Maybe spring.
Since weather's good. We will do that. I am working also on that, so I'm still, I'm working with Suzanne on some signage for that, to get that finished. We're gonna do something there on that back wall, like there's something, signs back there, so yeah, there's a few more little things we gotta do. Uh, up in Cumberland is, it will be in the process of swapping out all those yellow bulbs for the new LED bulbs, so it should be brighter and better for the walking track and that, so that'll be good. Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Uh, you have your financial reports from, uh, Miss Daisy, those are on pages ten through seventeen and eighteen through twenty-nine. Any questions from Miss Daisy on those? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number ten. You have a list of minutes from committee reports. All right. And then, uh, new business under A approvals, you have the opioid proprietor agreement, these are the agreements that they will sign, and we will, we will use for contracts for those grants that you guys approved in, uh, September. I forgot, this, this year's gone by so fast. In September. At this time, I will take a motion to approve those.
Motion approved, second.
Motion to approve, Matt Inyard, second. Junior Fields. I have motion second. Any questions or discussions on these? All right, seeing none, since it is money, we will roll call, Miss Daisy.
Helen Bows.
Yes.
Terry Givens.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Matt Inyard.
Yes.
Erica Ebel.
Yes.
Cordell Smith.
Yes.
Danny Erizari.
Yes.
Stephen Lish.
Yes.
Eddie Stout.
Yes.
Casey Elrod.
Yes.
Justin Malden.
Yes.
Javen Cripps.
Yes.
Tommy Vane.
Yes.
Junior Fields.
Yes.
Connor McDonald.
Yes.
Danny Huff.
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa.
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, thank you very much. Item number two is Tennessee Wardroom Infrastructure Investment Plan. These are memorandum of understanding between the county and the utility districts and their projects, and it just lays out the, the expectations for both of those, and again, this is, uh, just a, a contract for those. At this time, I will take a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Matt Inyard, second. Junior Fields. I have motion second. Any questions or discussions on these? All right, seeing none, since this is motion, we will roll call them as well.
Helen Bows.
Yes.
Terry Givens.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Matt Inyard.
Yes.
Erica Ebel. Cordell Smith.
Yes.
Danny Erizari.
Yes.
Stephen Lish.
Yes.
Eddie Stout.
Yes.
Casey Elrod.
Yes.
Justin Malden.
Yes.
Javen Cripps.
Yes.
Tommy Vane.
Yes.
Junior Fields.
Yes.
Connor McDonald.
Yes.
Danny Huff.
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Item B is the present question, it is a, it's the letter we received from Comptroller Treasury on the approval of our budgets. Are any questions or discussions on that? Seeing none, we'll move on to item C, resolutions. Item number one is resolution ten twenty-four oh-one, general fund, one-on-one budget matters. On page eighteen, twenty-four. Uh, the first one is the senior citizen grant, just setting up the lines with that. Fifty-four nine hundred, safety area, is a, uh, nine-on-one to purchase a vehicle. And soil conservation, fifty-seven five hundred, that's one that we talked about in budget time and during budget. Soil conservation up here was able to get twenty-one thousand dollars in money from this, nine thousand, which takes twelve thousand in federal, to, to bring on a, a, a full-time employee to do their work, uh, with that, so that put it up to thirty-two thousand with our contribution, and we, we needed to, uh, add eighteen thousand to, to make it work, but some of that will be, most of that twenty-one thousand will be reimbursed, we'll just take the eleven thousand that we were going to give them and include it here, so that's what, that's what that is. Uh, insurance. Okay, that's part of that as well, okay. All right, and then the fifty-eight nine hundred is the, is the shortfall for the SRO, SRO grant, where we had to pay back that of the six, seven, six, five thousand. At this time, I will take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have motion second. Any questions or discussions on any of these budget amendments? The fifty-four nine hundred is, I know we had a vehicle last, that from, that left out of the budget, so this is a different vehicle. This is, this is nine-on-one buying a, a. Nine-on-one buying. Yeah, buying, buying a vehicle and they will, uh, reimburse us for that.
Correct. We usually nine-on-one will purchase the vehicle for the direct possession. The county then announces the vehicle, furnishes the insurance, and then they own the vehicle, the vehicle. And then they own the vehicle, the vehicle, and that's it.
So that's what the Ms. Langley pretty much did, that's the agreement. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, Miss Daisy? Miss Daisy, roll call.
Helen Vos?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Matt Inyard?
Yes.
Erica Ebel?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Erzari?
Yes.
Stephen Lish?
Yes.
Eddie Stout?
Yes.
Tosi Elrod?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Javen Kribs?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Connor McDonald?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Item number two, resolution 102402 is to permit early collection of property taxes. This was brought to us by the district attorney Julie Wright, and she is here, if you have any questions on that, or she would like to address. She's going to go through that as well.
Can y'all hear me? Can everybody hear me? I'm here July. So the law is, you cannot collect taxes until the first, Monday of October, which this year fell on October 7. So that was a week that I was not allowed to collect property tax with our October discount. So I asked the jury, the attorney, to draft something saying October 1st, but he went ahead and did it where we could go as far as to July 10, as early as July 10. But your budget would have to be together, your tax rate and all that for us to collect it early. But that's just something that in the future, you wanted to think about doing. I know one county starts collecting in July. But again, you would have to have everything settled and give me about a month to get ready to have the bills out. Also, the assessor would have to be ready to close the roll. So just something to think about, but this will get me to where I can start collecting on October 1st for sure. It's lovely for getting an October discount, I want to give everybody as much time as possible to come in and pay it.
I'll just say that July 10, as early as my statute, you can trust me, you decide to start collecting. So I grant this to you, this statute, you can at least give trustee office as much leeway as, as statuteually possible pending compensation and the level of finances. But that will be pitted upon when they are reconciled, they are set, when Ms. Wright wants to start collecting. Yes, Justin? If, well, let's get a motion, second.
Motion to approve.
I have motion to approve, second. I have motion second, now, is there any questions or discussions?
If, if since this is the treasury, the laws of trustees potentially collecting before October, how does this affect our early discount? Since that resolution was written, doing 2% discount in October, will we have to potentially revisit that?
I've not looked at that resolution as if it was in effect before I'm in my position. So I would have to, I would assume the resolution specifically says October.
It's from my, when I read it, it just says, and you're collecting on October 2% discount.
And so, you know, I don't know that Ms. Wright or any, or you all would want to start collecting before July 1st regardless, but, sorry, July 1st, October 1st. But if you chose to at some point, we may need to revisit that resolution, but just those measures.
Can we just put that in this resolution? Go ahead and address it.
I wouldn't, because you may decide to, you may decide to remove that discount at some point in time, and you don't want to have to
redo it all.
redo this resolution.
It's not going to affect this year anyway, so.
Is this something we're going to have to pass every year or is this just one way of going forward?
What kind of forward? Unless we're going. Any other questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, we have a motion as second, please roll call, please, Miss Daisy.
Helen Vos?
Yes.
Terry Givens?
Yes.
Billy Bass?
Yes.
Greta Kirby?
Yes.
Charles Kent?
Yes.
Matt Inyard?
Yes.
Erica Ebel?
Yes.
Cordell Smith?
Yes.
Danny Erzari?
Yes.
Stephen Lish?
Yes.
Eddie Stout?
Yes.
Tosi Elrod?
Yes.
Justin Malden?
Yes.
Javen Kribs?
Yes.
Tommy Vane?
Yes.
Junior Fields?
Yes.
Connor McDonald?
Yes.
Danny Huff?
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, item number three, resolution 82409, it is to levy a countywide motor vehicle tax of $50. It is the second reading of this.
Motion approved, second.
Motion approved, and second. All right, any questions, discussions on second reading?
I just wanted to make a quick comment, because I've been getting a lot of calls from constituents who want to wrap it up. And I would like to consider that, as long as I'm sure that they consider. And you know that there is a petition going around to place it on record. So if they reach a certain amount of signatures, I just wanted to explain that, that people go to vote.
And what we're looking into, what Jerry is looking into, is if that petition does come forward and we don't want to do the referendum, we just want to kill it, then that's the question that I've been approached about. And so, at that point, because if you go to referendum, you're looking at a special election, it's going to cost you $30,000, $40,000. And that's the case, I just, if it goes to referendum and we kill it, I just send $30,000 to Miki, let him use it. That's totally up to you guys. All right, yes, sir, Governor.
I think, I don't think there's anybody here who likes the idea of having to raise revenue and increase taxes, but just a reminder to everyone that when Collier did the study, it would take $63 million to get us back not to gray roads, to oncar roads. That's the number they gave us, and this raises a little under $1 million. So this is, I mean, we're barely, this is barely a drop in the bucket of what we need to get us back on track. And I'll echo what Mr. Beller said, there's nobody in county government who does more with less than Miki Barrett. And I'll also say, we fund the roads right now through property tax and gas tax. The fairest way, I believe, to also fund the roads is through the wheel tax. And increases to the gas tax don't go to referendum. Increases to the property tax don't go to referendum. I think it's appropriate that we treat the wheel tax in this instance, where it's not extra, it's just the base funding to treat them all the same. So that's why I'm in favor of passing the testes.
Any other questions or discussions? I did find, I was just reviewing this, and in section nine, I'm not sure if this, I'm not sure how this happened. But we've got the central election shall begin on the first day of November 2024, that's obviously not a possibility. And it was my recollection that it changed, we made that the first January 25th. And I'm not sure why that didn't get changed. But that should say January 1st, 25th, because that would give, that would give the third vacation condition plus time for the clerk's office to attend. Making a vacation of February 1st is not realistic. Any other questions or discussion?
Do you want to change the resolution? Or the motion?
Yeah, yes, yeah, we need to make sure we plan. I don't know, I thought, I thought we talked about this last month. And I think, and I'm not sure why it didn't get changed here, but I did say it did. So maybe somebody else invented it different, I thought we talked about January 1st. But regardless, just to make sure it's recorded in the minutes, I would make sure that we had amended that motion to amend it to January 1st. So the one, in September, there was a motion to amend from 100 to 50, and that passed. In the September resolution, it does say January 1st.
When we passed it in September.
Okay, so somehow, okay, so it's just a typo on this version of the, okay.
Yeah, I'm looking back at September, the resolution passed in September, it does say, so I recall that being in there.
Okay.
So I will offer to draw my amendment, and just so the record reflects it, to make a motion to approve with the correction that collection will begin on the 1st of January 2025.
Second.
Motion as second, with the addition. Any other questions or discussions? Yes, sir, Justin?
I will say this, I've also been talking to Miki for a few months now, you know, I've been telling you, Mayor, we need to look at something like this, because we need to support him and support the roads. And he's shown that he is capable of spending money wisely and efficient in what he does. Our county has 450.8 miles of road, 343.4 miles of tar and chip, 108.4 miles of asphalt. At current rates of $60,000 a mile for tar and chip and $200,000 a mile for asphalt, that would come out to 42,284,000 if you were to hit every road right now. If you were to take that and try to do it on an annualized basis, assuming tar and chip lasts for a six-year, expected usage about average, and asphalt at 15 years, 10 to 15 years, so I'm taking 15 to be more conservative, we'll put it on the upper hand, you would need $4,859,333,000 a year to maintain those roads, as they wear out, to maintain them. That's just the roads, that's not culverts, that's not putting box culverts where we need box culverts with, you know, because the engineering on some of these culverts is really not what they need to be. That doesn't touch anything to do with our bridges in this county. And when we get this stormwater, this study back, I'm afraid what that's going to look like. But just out of $5 million would be what we need to maintain the roads. And the majority of that, 76% of that is still tar and chip, it's not asphalt. So we're not looking at Class 1 roads with that number. Now, some of the roads, we've just been doing a good job with that, but that's a realistic, more of a realistic number of where we need to end up. So when we say $1 million, and I'll say this, at that number, Miki doesn't have the equipment and manpower to do that much miles of road in a year. So that number's not realistic, it would have to be higher, because he would need more equipment. So conservative estimate of $5 million to maintain our roads, and we're trying to get a million, and that's, we know that's not enough. It'll keep Miki busy, it'll let him do what they enjoy doing, and put him out there on the roads, and take care of it. And with the ARP money that he's given, with the extra million dollars that we gave him, again, he's shown that he is capable of doing it. The biggest thing that I've heard about since I've been the commissioner is our roads are terrible, we need to work on our roads, fix our roads. Well, in order to fix our roads, we got to have the funding, we are very limited on our revenue sources. We can't just pull money out of thin air and make it work. Miki is good at what he does, and he will spend his money wisely, and we can put it to the roads. I will just be very blunt, and I will say this, I understand sending for referendum, nobody lacks taxes. You hear that word, they hear taxes, and that follows a lot of people. This county runs very efficiently, very, very efficiently. And we look at our debt load compared to other counties around us, and we look at our tax base. If you compare our tax base to anybody around us, we literally have the lowest tax base. Most counties around us, we're 2% on sales tax, people are hiring us. Our property tax outside Wilson County, all the other rural counties in the NBA for Cumberland with the exception of one, we have a lower property tax rate. Every county, most, I won't say every county, Wilson County, the majority of the counties that have come over the past few years have done property tax increases. We have done it, and we have not, and Mr. Beller said, we have kicked the can down the road for so long, on the roads. And we're thinking of $1 million, and it's not going to solve the problem, but it will help, and we need to do it. And if this goes to referendum and we kill it, because it goes to referendum, or if it goes to referendum and it gets voted down, I will be honest, I don't want to hear anyone talk about the roads. If we're given the opportunity to get the roads fixed, this is our ability to be able to do that, and be able to fix the number one concern from people that I've heard from. I want to see this happen, I want to make sure that it gets done. If it doesn't happen, and if we push forward, we try to do what we can, and it ends up not going through, that's fine. I'll be, I will be okay with it, but I think that we need to examine, reexamine our priorities and shift the roads to something else that doesn't matter.
I wanted to say, I'm not necessarily against the wheel tax, because I do feel like it's like a new status quo. The only thing is, if it does get enough, petition does get enough signatures to go to referendum, I would not be in favor of killing something that, a referendum, that if you can get enough voters interested in something that people have seen. So I'm cautious against the fact as well.
I've had a lot of calls on this, and I am definitely not against the wheel tax, let that be known that. But the question that people in District 4 has got is, if this is passed, how long would it stay on record? Would it never end yet, is it five years?
But there's no ending on it right there.
My answer would be that our roads are in great shape when they're off.
The problem is, even if the taxpayers vote it down, all that's going to be doing is giving our grandkids and our great-grandkids something that they will be able to bode themselves out of. We're going to keep digging a hole that is going to be unfixable if we don't fix it.
I've got another part of that.
I don't want to pay taxes no more than anybody, because we got to pay it, we bugged it, we got to pay it, and I got a lot of vehicles.
I understand and appreciate that the wheel tax is the most far tax we've ever done, I understand that. But there's another way. Mr. Beller hit on it a while ago, and some others have made comments, we may not be able to fund it later on down the road. But instead of just taking our, what I'm calling our cushion point, sitting on that 30% and collecting, why not take 3.5%, 7% what put out, then that way wouldn't hurt anyone. We've got the money there, that's what it's all for, the benefit of the camp, why can't we not use that one?
But didn't we take a $20 million fund draw this year, if you do that? You're just going further in the hole next year.
Yeah, I mean, that's money's not going to be there all the time.
If we get to a point where we cannot fund, then we back out. And then come back with this later on, we can always put this wheel tax in later on down the road. Right now, we can stand on our own two feet and fund this thing without hurting this thing. And then later on, if we can't do it, hey, put a wheel tax in. And I'm all for it, either way, if we do a wheel tax now, I'm for it. But if we can go this other route, I think it'd be a little bit better on the citizens of this county.
But I like to say, if we can pay for it as we go, and not have to get in the bind and borrow money, that's where you get in trouble as.
But we shouldn't, we shouldn't have to borrow money when we got.
We've got a little bit.
Yeah, and I understand exactly what you're saying. But when I came in, Cordell, we had nothing, we were borrowing money to get from July to October, and I didn't like that. And that's not through government to do that.
And I'm not for borrowing any money, I'm just saying, as long as we can do it, and if we can't, back out. It's simple, if you can't do it, you just can't do it. But go as long as we can, and then look at another option. When we've got the money. It'd be different if we was so broke, and we was having to do like we was talking about, and borrow money all the time to make it from one year to the next. But we're not in that situation right now.
Because we worked our tail off to get there.
Because of good government. Because of good government, we're not in that position anymore.
I don't worry, we'll be back there.
But yet, still, I don't want to put any of our citizens any further in the hole than what we can use. Even if we did a three and a half percent of that thirty percent and did a twenty-five dollar wheel tax, everybody wins.
And I agree with you, but how, that's not going to last forever.
But we can do it till it pays out.
Well, you can't do it till next budget, because you can't, you can't move that money to a, a fund and it'll be out.
That's right.
Have to be in that in the next budget.
And you know, like I said, I'm not against the wheel tax. I'm just trying to look at other options that it's not creating such a burden on the citizens of Smith County. We're burdened enough. That's all I'm asking, is to look at other options. Instead of jumping out there now, look at other options. And we, we may have to find part of it with a, a lower wheel tax, I'm not saying that. And later on, we might have to jump it up if we can't fund it anymore. But at least let's exhaust every option before we go ahead in it. I, I did like, one of the people in my district asked me today, I plead their case. The rest is up to us. I'm out.
Justin.
Daisy, best guess, if we did that, we took three and a half percent, I mean, we're looking at a million, so, you know, taking, taking three and a half percent and lowering the, lowering the wheel tax to twenty-five, it would get you a million dollars.
Well, it's not, and I would say this, I was concerned I have there is, I'm, I'm not concerned with lowering the thirty percent per se, but your costs in the general fund are not going to stay level year after year. And what that difference is in there for is to help alleviate the times in between when you adjust the revenue. And hopefully, you don't have to, hopefully, you're, you know, you control that, and your revenues, your signatures grow together, and you can keep that cushion there for when that happens outside of your control, you know, whatever disasters could come, or, or on a year, your revenues could take another stop, and you don't have time to react to another revenue source. So, I would want to, if that was going to be something that's discussed to be done, and I would want there to be a lot of discussion about that, about changing that, and what would be acceptable. I, I don't think that lowering it from thirty percent is necessarily irresponsible. I just, I don't think it's going to give you as much funding as you think.
And, and the word everybody agrees with, the thirty percent was set as a cash flow issue, because as the mayor said, when, previously, the county did tax anticipation notes every year. Then the county did not have enough revenue from July till, till property taxes started coming in to actually fund the operation of the county government. So, they were borrowing that money, the county was paying interest on that money. And so, that thirty percent threshold was set to make sure we wouldn't have cash flow issues going forward. So, while we may be able to reduce it some, one, for Roger Peter to pay Paul kicking the can down the road, and, and so it's not going to be sustainable anyway. But then two, we run the risk that we put ourselves in an adverse financial situation, where maybe we did have cash flow issues at some point.
Anybody else? Michelle.
Well, was it discussed during budget about putting a, a specific time period on this? Because that's the feedback I've had, is that there's no end date. I think everybody kind of agrees we need to do something, but if it's just never ending, then, you know, and like Cordell said, that's, you know, something else, if we could put like a two-year period and, and implement some other things.
My question is, if we put an end date, what do we do after the end date for the roads? What's, what's the solution if we stop the funding in two years, five years, ten years?
If we have a.
You did two years of study, so what would we get?
If, if, we put ten years on it, let's see what progress we make in ten years. And at the end of ten years, if we're not following any delay, we need to increase, we need to do something else to adjust, then we do it.
Mickey got two and a half million dollars over the past three years, and we're still where we're at. We still need money, and he still needs more than, more than what we're trying to validate, even with what he was given.
What about?
So, I go back to, we funded with property taxes, and that's not coming back. I mean, we don't put a time cap on the property taxes that fund the roads. We don't put a, the state hasn't put a time limit on the gas tax that funds the roads, you know. Traditionally, when there was a time limit on wheel taxes, it's because it was set to pay down debt, or it was going to a specific purpose that is, that had a definite ending. Now, we may not have known exactly what that end date was, but it was to pay down debt, or to pay off the jail, or to, you know, in some counties, pay off schools. You know, there's different things for using that tax money. And in this one, we know what we're going to use it for, and it's going to be to buy chip, to buy asphalt. And there is no end date on it, we're going to need that. So, that's my, I mean, there's no end date, because, you know, if in five years, we don't need to fund the roads, we can put an end date on it, but until that happens, we're going to need this revenue.
Another question, it is hanging first.
Mayor, I live on a good paved road. I don't go on rough roads too much, I do some, but I've found it's not. And I just want to say this, I'm all for this wheel sticker. It's basically fifty dollars a year, that figures out a little over four dollars a month. My own personal feeling about that right there is, if you can't afford that, you don't need a car. Now, that's just my opinion.
Irresponsible, that's what you get.
Yes, go right ahead.
Erica's lady can prepare her rent for the other day.
Yeah.
And when she come, the four dollars, that's exactly what she was short, four dollars. And I don't mean she had four dollars, she could go home and get it.
Well.
I'm saying that, it was an end, the road was there.
That's fine, that's your opinion on it.
That's a fact, that's a fact.
That's good, that's good. I, I.
Everybody does not feel the same way as you, but Mr. D, there's a factor out there that's hurt.
That's right.
And I know people like you didn't care less.
Yes, I couldn't care less, I couldn't care less.
Well, then why do you have to like an extra burden on these people to follow it up?
I don't put an extra burden on nobody. I'm just saying that if you can't afford four dollars, some of the money for a car, you don't need it.
Okay, there's some. You drive around with six hundred and some dollars a month and pay rent and eat and buy your medicine and try to get that. That's the attitude, right? You can't do it.
No, I can't.
And maybe a lot of these people that's in the camp, they ain't going to save you seven hundred dollars a month, baby.
Well, how do they afford a car?
I do want to, baby, if you be willing to make the, I'll show you.
No.
And I would say if you don't.
I'm just telling you my opinion on this right here, you vote wherever you want to. Any other legislature in here do the same, and that's exactly how.
Hey, we're sensing a heartbeat.
Do what?
Maybe sensing a heartbeat, that would spread to my people, you would spread to you.
That's exactly right.
And I always defend the whole man.
Hey, guys, that's enough, we're, we're going to quit, I'm serious.
Chair. You got it, motion. You got a second?
Well, Junior had his hand up, so I'll go right here with him down.
Here, here's, at the end of the day, there's three ways this can be funded. A wheel tax, a loan, or a property tax. At the end of the day, a wheel tax is the most fair. If we do anything else, it's going to cost our taxpayers, certain individuals enter that's paying taxes more money. It's the fairest tax of all. We need to do it and be done with it.
Absolutely. Take. Vote. Call, if you have a question. Yes, sir. All right, go, go, please, please.
Helen Rose.
Yes.
Terry Givens.
Yes.
Billy Bass.
Yes.
Greta Kirby.
Yes.
Charles Kent.
Yes.
Matt Inyard.
Yes.
Erica Abel.
No.
Cordell Smith.
No.
Danny Orosari.
No.
Stephen Lish.
Yes.
Eddie Stout.
Yes.
Casey Elrod.
Yes.
Justin Malden.
Yes.
Javin Krebs.
Yes.
Tommy Bane.
Yes.
Junior Fields.
Yes.
Connor McDonald.
Yes.
Danny Huff.
Yes.
Ed De La Rosa.
Yes.
Sixteen to three.
Sixteen was, it had to turn to dark, so it passes on the second reading. All right, item D is a list of notaries before you. I'll take a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve, second. That enters approved, notaries. Notaries, any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, notaries are closed. Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion to adjourn for the second, all those in favor. Opposed, or adjourned.